Bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. The meeting is, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Berg.
Here.
Mr. Perhulovich.
Here.
Mr. Shonar.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Fantastic. So, we have a lot to accomplish this evening. Does anybody have any committee reports? Mr. Shonar, attend anything in the last week?
It was the last week, it was everything.
All right.
Last week, yes.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. So, I think then we have a few board presentations. I think we're gonna get started with our audit report.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening. Why don't you, there's a microphone right over here. I don't know.
Well, good evening, everyone. Doesn't matter, we're good, right? So, I'm here to present the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. We're here a little bit earlier than the previous year, and it's mainly because we were, last year, waiting for some state information regarding one of the new pronouncements, regarding pension reporting. This year, they did delays, but not nearly as long as last year. Last year, that information didn't come to us until about November 1st. So, that's good news. We're here, able to do that, so we're able to close out, present the audit. I'll go through the audit report, just in an overview format, and then if anybody has any specific questions, please stop me. So, the report that's given is broken up into various components. We have the introductory section, which is really comprised of the MDNA and some other intro letter and some other data. Then, we have the meat and potatoes section of the report, which is really the auditor's opinion, financial statements. We have the statistical section at the end, which gives some demographic information, generally over a 10-year period. It's great information if somebody comes to the district as a new resident and wants to find out, well, can you tell me a little bit more about the school, other than just pure dollars and cents from an audit report number? So, it gives some demographic information, other historical information, tax rates, those type of items. And the last section is the single audit section. Single audit simply means that if you have more than seven, now it's changed, if you have more than $750,000 in either federal expenditures or state expenditures, you now have to have a sing, you have to have a single audit. The numbers were just elevated from a half a million last year. We are required to have a single audit, and we're only required to have a state single audit. Our federal expenditures are below the $750,000 value. And really, what does that mean? So, now, we're subject to a state single audit. It simply means that we have to determine as an auditor what are major programs. Major programs are dictated by size, as well as some other elements, and then we're required to test those programs, specifically, the allowability, some of the costs involved. We do that, that's reported in that section. So, in summary of the audit report itself, we have the first, the auditor's opinion, which is an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion you can get. All Board of Educations are striving for that. We have our second opinion towards the back of the report, which is a GAS governmental auditing standards, which is an opinion that's reporting on your internal controls and compliance. That was, again, an unmodified, which, again, no issues, no deficiencies. And the last thing we have is our single audit opinion, which is, again, reporting on the laws, internal controls, and compliance on the single audit requirements. There were no modifications, it's an unmodified, clean. There are no deficiencies noted. So, that's all great news, and I'll cut to the chase, which I think all the board members know already, but the management report, we have no deficiencies to report this year and no management comments. So, it's good news, it means your office is run well, and I think that's, you know, it's not normal, and I think that sometimes what happens is you go through the years and you have very little, and you get used to that, you get complacent with that outcome, but that is not normal. It just means that the office is run well, and I think that what I've seen from Mike so far, hopefully, things will continue in that vein. So, having said that, I just wanna talk a little bit about fund equity, and I am gonna go to page, I'm gonna go to page 69. So, 69 is a culmination of your total revenues and expenditures and changes in fund equity, and that's on the budgetary basis of accounting. And the big distinction here on the budgetary basis of accounting, and why I'm describing it as, and not GAAP basis of accounting, because we do have the financials reported in the B section, Exhibit Bs, we're in Exhibit Cs, and the Exhibit Bs are under Generally Accepted Accounting Principles GAAP. We're not here. And the main reason is, is that about six years ago or so, the state of New Jersey decided to delay the final state aid payments to the Board of Educations, and now, we're up to two payments being delayed. So, if in the accounting industry, what we have is, we have a matching principal requirement. So, it's pretty simple. If the state of New Jersey is gonna take those last two state aid payments and put those state aid payments in their '16, '17 budget, and not pay them out in their '15, '16 budget, which is the audit we're doing, well, if they're not gonna show it as an expense, we cannot show it as a revenue under Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. So, what did the state say? The state said, "Well, that's quite okay, you can go ahead and report it under Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, but we want you now to also report it on the budgetary basis," which is the state basis of accounting. So, this is really the Bible, you know? So, we go through the audit report, we've got the financial statements presented on the budgetary basis, we have it also presented under GAAP, which is in Exhibits B, and then we also have it presented under Full Accrual, and that's in the A section, okay? And really, what the A section does is it allows, it allows the Board of Education in the state of New Jersey to be compared to any other Full Accrual in the United States of America. And it's really for the rating agencies, and they're able to then compare every Board of Ed to a different Board of Ed from that perspective. So, we have it presented the three different ways. However, Exhibit C1 is really what the Board of Education is really focused on. This is what's gonna dictate your upcoming budget, where your expenditures were, how are compared to the results of what you budgeted over the previous year. And so, when you look at this particular exhibit and the last page, page 69, you can see that we ended the year under the actual column of fund balance of $4,647,026. And it's comprised of various components. And what I'll do is, I'll just identify what they are, but I'm gonna start from the bottom up. It's just a little bit easier. The unassigned fund balance that we see of $756,710, it really simply means that you have, Board of Educations in the state of New Jersey are allowed to retain 2% of their operating expenses as a undesignated or free balance. There are some minor adjustments that add to it, so that is our 2%. We are at the 2% maximum at the $756,000. And then, we go through the process, and we go up the ladder here. We have assigned fund balance. We have designated for subsequent year expenditures of $259,000. Simply means that's part of the fund balance that we're currently utilizing as a revenue in '16, '17, the year we're in. Then, we have year-end encumbrances, $194,156. Encumbrances are just a reservation of fund equity. An example would be, for instance, your contract with us. So, the board contracted to have an audit done from Lurch Vincent Higgins, so what you did is you executed a purchase order after the contract was initiated, but yet, we couldn't have performed any of the goods or services. Had we done, you know, had we been able to do that, it would've been an accounts payable. Obviously, we couldn't, so it's a reservation of equity, but you did commit to the payment of those claims. Then, we come up into the restricted areas, and the first one is capital reserve. That number's now sitting at the end of the year of $1,487,667. Not too much of a change. The year before, it was $1,705,000. The next item is your maintenance reserve at $200,000. That amount was increased from $100,000 from the previous year. Maintenance reserve is easy to get at, simply go through the budget process. If we don't spend all the money that we budget through the maintenance reserve, it reverts back to the maintenance reserve. Capital reserve, we all know that's for facility improvements. And the last item that we have is, we talked about the capital maintenance, now, we're talking about the excess surplus. So, when I was here last year presenting the audit for the 2000, June of 2015, the excess surplus amount was $759,664. So, it's just a simple calculation. We go through the total equity, and then, we have the various buckets that we're filling up. And then, once you're done with that, any remaining portion after those various components is gonna be your excess surplus. So, last year, we were $759,664. When we went through that same calculation this particular year, we're at $989,535. And that amount of excess surplus in the current year of $985 will be the amount that you'll utilize when you do your budget for '17, '18. It'll be a surplus, really, tax relief, however you wanna look at it, it's going back to the voters in that amount. And so, the designated piece of $759 is in the current '16, '17, along with the $260,000, which is roughly, again, roughly your million dollars, so you're kinda consistent as to what you're gonna be putting back from '16, '17 to '17, '18. And it's kind of important, you wanna stay consistent, it'll help you on the budgeting process. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that? I just, you know.
Actually, I have a question on that. Your last statement is you wanna remain consistent on that. So, the district has experienced some extraordinary expenditures this year.
Right.
And so, it might prove tough to try to keep that much of an excess surplus in the next couple of years. Will that reflect badly on the audit if the amount changes and it's not consistent in prior years?
No, it's not, it's not really gonna reflect at all in the audit, it's just basically a management tool for you.
Okay.
Because you know what you're facing.
Right.
Because if you're gonna have that loss of revenue, then that's automatically pressure on the tax.
Right.
Side. So, from an accounting perspective, compliance perspective, no, not at all.
Okay.
I think it's just a management issue.
Would it be a footnote or anything in the audit, or?
No, no, no.
What about the, if we use a significant amount of the cap reserve?
No, and I understand the situation we're in, and you can actually, I mean, I've been in conversation with Mike and Steve Rogan as well, so, you know, I think at the end of the day, you're fortunate enough to be able to have enough money in the capital reserve and the maintenance reserves, and I know we have money that you can appropriate, which was the extraordinary aid from last year. So, no, I mean, I think that the only advice I would give to you is make sure that we have county approval on everything that we're doing as we go through this process.
Okay.
Because the last thing we wanna do is, you know, we could talk verbally with the county, and they'll say, "Yes, yes, yes," but we'd like to have it in writing.
Absolutely. Okay.
And I think you'd be okay at that point.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I do wanna touch about, and I talked about it a little bit last year, and it's just to give you a flavor for what's going on with the pension systems, and I know everybody's kinda knows what's happening in the underfunding situation, and I talked a little bit about it last year, and I'll just spend two minutes on it. So, in the audit report, I mean, some of these are RSI exhibits, require supplementary information, but the pension liability on the PERS side for all the employees who have retired in the, again, the public employee side, last year, we were looking at $6,707, today, it's $8,400,000, that total liability. And again, that's assuming everybody lives through their life expectancies, we have a rate of return, we have expenditures, the actuarial professionals who perform the calculations, that's your percentage share. But really, the dozer is when you look at the TPF, the teacher's pension. It's not in the financial statements, because we're not required to make the payment, the PERS, we are, so it is in the financial statements, but we're not on this particular component. So, this number, the total liability, your share, went from $55 million up to $65 million. And what's really alarming is when you look at this particular calculation. So, what happens is, is that the state makes an ob behalf payment for each Board of Education, okay? And the actuarial professionals go through, and they determine what the calculation should've been, okay? So, it's in the footnotes of the report, it's just a little hard to extrapolate, so I kinda just summarize it for you. But basically, what's happening is, is that the actuarial reporter, those professionals, said that the amount that should've been made on Cedar Grove's behalf, or TPAF employees, should've been roughly $3.9, almost $4 million. The amount that they made on your behalf was $900,000. So, that's why.
That's close.
What page is that on?
You're, well, you know, if you look at page 74, you're gonna see the $55 and the $65 million.
Yep.
But the actual amount that we've actually paid versus what the actuarial guys had said is buried in the footnotes, I could tell you where that is if you wanna see it, but... So, that's really interesting. So, when you, you know, and it kinda, it makes sense, when you're going from your liability, how does it jump $10 million in one year? Well, because you're just a small piece, and, you know, you're making roughly, I don't know, you know, extremely small percentage of what they are required to make. So, food for thought. Doesn't mean, I mean, I could do anything with it, but at least you'll have a little flavor as to what's going on.
And that's what the state pays on our behalf.
That's the state, yeah. Legitimately, you're not required to make any of those payments, but we all know at the end of the day, eventually, the state's gonna have to make the payments for the retirees. And what's gonna happen next year is there's a new GASB pronouncement, auditing standard coming out, that they're gonna want us to report the post-medical. That's gonna be an astronomical number. So, now, we're just talking pensions. Once you start getting into medical benefits and health benefits for life, those numbers are gonna be astronomical. We thought these were crazy.
And you said, "I'm sorry, the state paid roughly about $900,000."
About $900,000, out of the $3,970,000.
Okay.
And that's coming out of the state actuarial reports that we got from Division of Pensions. Yeah, it's a problem. It's a problem. Okay?
All right.
Any questions?
On that note.
Down our neck.
Exactly. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks for having me, we appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Yep. Good night, everybody.
No, we didn't do anything yet. We, not like last year, where we had the couple of small things.
Yeah, we had no comments.
Yeah. I know, I...
Athletics, Matt?
Yeah. Athletics.
He asked $9 million, he said yes, so, yeah.
Way to go, Robbie, yes!
Unfortunately, I was teasing Mike, but I said, "You know what this means." He's only one minute down.
Absolutely, yep.
Wow, Robbie gets a gold star, Mr. Gogarty.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Hi, Mr. Featherson. Good night, everybody. That's awesome.
It's great. Next, we're gonna have Mr. Featherman give the Park results for 2015, 2016.
Yes.
We are anxiously awaiting that.
Thank you, good evening. You should have a copy of this presentation in the packet there.
We do.
Presentation?
Looks a little...
There's a lot of information there, we'll go through it pretty quickly, as you'll So, we'll start off this year similar to how we started off last year, only this time, we have something to compare it to. As were my remarks the last time, let's talk a bit about where we are. Well, we just had our second administration of Park, you're all well aware of that. Who took the assessment? You also know that's grade 3 through 11 in ELA, English Language Arts and Mathematics. Specifically regarding mathematics, grades 3 through 8, and of course, assessments, which include Algebra I, we had a number of 8th graders take that, geometry and Algebra II. You'll see the statistics for each of those assessments in a moment. A quick refresher on the Park performance levels. Those of you in the business, we're no longer dealing with proficient, advanced proficient, partially proficient, we're dealing with levels 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Better defined as not yet meeting, partially meeting, approaching, meeting grade level, and exceeding. We love the fours and fives, and we wanna see lots of fours and fives, and happily, we do. Let's take a look at state data first. This slide is overwhelming, I admit, so let's just take a moment to sort of digest it. We're looking at English Language Arts data for the state of New Jersey. Let's just frame it that way first. Let's look at these column-wise. We have 2015, or last year's data, and then, 2016, this year's data. Going from left to right in rows, we have grade levels, grades 3 through 11, as we just mentioned, going from left to right. And now, applying what we just learned about performance levels, we've got level 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. This is important, because it sets up the slides that I prepared. And importantly, what you see here is this sort of bracketed, emphasized pair of columns here. We're looking at percent change in levels 1 and 2. Okay, and recall, levels 1 and 2 are the lowest performance levels. And as a complement to that, percent change in levels 4 and 5, what we call the college and career-ready portion of the scale. I set this up now, because you'll see a similar data profile with Cedar Grove's results. Notice the arrows here in percent change in levels 1 and 2. Which way are they facing? Exactly. So, going from 2015 to 2016, what we're seeing across the state are the percentages of levels 1 and 2 going which way. Now, which is just what we wanna see across the state. We have a better handle on Park, not that more kids taking it is contributing to this necessarily, but certainly, our educators have a better handle on the assessment, on the skills and strategies our kids need to develop to perform well on it. So, thankfully, across the state, except for this grade level here, grade 11, they've all gone down for levels 1 and 2. Okay, let's move this along, Michael. Okay. Let's look at this column here, percent change in levels 4 and 5. You're all a good audience, how do we want the arrow to face in this column? Yes, if we're performing well, we want it to go up, and thankfully, the state has seen pretty modest increases in this particular college and career-ready level column. This is good news. And as you'll see, we have lots of arrows going up here, and lots of arrows going down there, but not all of them. This is mathematics, same idea, don't need to go through it, you get the idea. We're focusing here, again, across the state, arrows going down for levels 1 and 2, nice job, and in percentage 4 and 5, arrows going up. Let's take a look at Cedar Grove's information. But before we do, a little bit more about state data. Here, we're looking at the state, now, we're bragging a little bit, year-to-year increase in the participation rates. Back up to the heading here, this is New Jersey's tested population, number of students in 2015 versus those 2016. The numbers have all gone up. So, more of us are taking the assessment, good job. That was Language Arts, this is Mathematics, the trend is also the same there, year-to-year increases are substantial. I'm happy to report that our year-over-year increase is noteworthy, it's about 50 kids. We only have about 1,100 who take the test, so, you know, when we increase it by 50, that's pretty good, percentage-wise. Okay, enough of that, let's talk about Cedar Grove. Okay, this chart here is meaningful, but it's better, I think, if we talk about percentages, because our population from year to year fluctuates a little bit. So, while it's nice to know that in 2015, in 3rd grade, we had five students perform at level 1, and the same in this year, it might be, well, that's a bad example, because it's the same number, but when I get to the percentage slide, it seems to make a bit more meaningful sense. So, what you see here is our grades 3 through 11, okay, and the actual number of students, I can do this, because we're so small, I can actually count them and tell you how many of each of our children scored in each performance level, 3, 4, and 5. Where do we see the larger numbers, thankfully? From this point forward, at least to level 4, certainly, level 5, we wanna make these numbers a bit larger. And we're doing that, as you'll see, our percentages are trending in the right direction. Okay, that's Language Arts, math, the same thing, an overwhelming bunch of data, but when you have some time, you can kinda pour through it. Again, same idea, here's our grade levels, and how we did per student across performance levels. The trends are good, let's talk about them. Applying the arrow system that we just familiarized ourselves with, let's first talk about our performance in Language Arts. Again, here we are, grades 3 through 11, let's look at 3rd grade. Okay, what I've done here is looked at 2015 and compared to 2016 data, and we regrettably have realized a 1.3% change, again, this is levels 1 and 2 in 3rd grade. So, we would rather have this arrow facing which way? Down, like the state. So, this is one of the areas we're gonna look at more closely. Why is that happening? Likewise, grade 5, 6, 7, and 8. So, here, we've got our attention. Well, let's look at some better news, percent change in grade levels 4 and 5. Here, we wanna see the arrows facing up, and gladly, thankfully, many of them are. Okay, so, we've had a sizable increase here, grade 4, grade 8, much more sizable increases grades 9 and 10 in particular. What does that mean? More of our children are performing at the college and career-ready level on the Park assessment than last year. Yes, there are some arrows pointing down, we need to have a very hard, well, this is almost a push here, but we need to take a good look at what's going on in this area here, and we intend to do that. Let's look at Mathematics, same setup. Here's our grade levels, here's our percentage change, now, again, we're looking at levels 1 and 2. We would rather have our arrows facing which way here? We would, and we have more facing down for Mathematics. We seem to be performing a bit stronger, particularly in the early grades. And on the stronger side of the ledger, the college and career-ready side, we have most of our arrows facing in the correct direction. So, we're doing well here at the upper grade levels, and in grades 4, 5, 6, we're strong there. We've got some areas of concern that we're gonna take a closer look at. Any questions on what we're seeing there? Again, I know it takes time, I've spent hours collating and analyzing, I've got a much more familiar feel for it, please.
So, I have a question. So, in this, on this, we're comparing 3rd grade, year-over-year, kids in 3rd grade. Are we also looking at the, on those previous slides, we looked at partially proficient in grade 3, and then, for 2015, did we then look to see, okay, then in 2016, when they became 4th graders, how they did in partially proficient? Because it looked like, just quickly looking like grade 3, the amount of kids in partially proficient had decreased once they became 4th graders and took the test in 16. So, are we looking at that as well?
We're looking at all of that. So, the answer is yes, and that's the job of our administrators and our team of educators is to, I don't particularly care for this word, disaggregate the data in that fashion to figure out where our strengths and weaknesses lie.
Do we have, I mean, do we have trends for that in the presentation, or?
We do not. We do have some other statistics that you'll see that may help sort of frame it out for you.
Right.
Let's get through it, and then we'll see if you feel a little better about that. Any questions about what we've seen thus far? Okay. Let's look at it a slightly different way, this may help frame it a little bit. So, now, we're going to look at the met or exceeded percentages here, okay? So, what we talk about, the important zones, are those moving into college and career-ready land. So, what I've done here is looked at levels 4 and 5 combined, and compared us to the state. Not a very meaningful tool, I mean, we don't compare ourselves to the state, that's not what we do, but it provides a little bit of context. So, across the state, in grades 3 through 11, what have they seen in terms of the percentage of students that are at or above level 4? And as you can see, we surpass the state in nearly every category. So, for instance, at North End, the percentage of our kids that are considered college and career-ready in 3rd grade is what? About 64%. Okay? We'd like that number higher, so if we look at grade 4, we find it is much higher, in fact. So, these are strong numbers. I think they represent well what we're doing on a daily basis. Are there some concerns that pop up here? Well, yes, there are, and they've got our... Well, yes, there are, and they've got our attention. So we're going to look at some of these middle grade levels, particularly this one here, and what's going on there. Language Arts, same in math. What I've done is put together similar numbers here. Again, here are state figures, students achieving levels four and five, strong numbers at North End and South End, and across from grades three through 11. So, there's a lot to take in here, but I think there are some strong positive signs. Okay, let's just double back to the participation numbers here, I talked about that a moment ago. We're such a small district that we're going to get fluctuations in participation, just given the size of the coming kindergarten classes and so on down the line. But the bottom line is here, we're looking at 55 more students set for the test this year than last. Language Arts, mathematics, similar.
So the same kind of, if we were comparing those third graders in 15, there were 126 third graders that took it in 15, and then in 16, there was the same, the same group took it, 126 of them, as fourth graders, then?
I didn't do that comparison here, this is just sort of a year-over-year number, that's it. But I get what you're asking, that's not reflected here, but...
When you became a fifth or a sixth grader, right?
Yeah. I mean, the positive trend is what we've, what we're focused on is making a greater percentage of our tested population test, and that's what we have. So this is just a couple of talking points that I'm not really going to talk about, but we've talked about throughout the year, and we will continue to talk about throughout the year, is what are we doing with this data? What are our administrators, educators, and support staff doing? All these are the things we're doing. We're looking for strengths and gaps in this data. We're going to use this data as a tool to identify areas of need and certain areas of strength. And we're going to push out resources to both our educators in a form of professional development, as you've been most supportive of, and our parents, to support our mission at home. And to do that, those of you whose child took the assessment, who have received your scores, I think by now, we're familiar with their score report, and on the bottom here, you see your levels, and it'll look just like this, and your child will fall in there. And the score report comes with a thorough description of the levels and what it means for your child. Any questions?
Last year, I have a little questions tonight. Last year, I think we did a presentation for the district, right? You did at the high school in that auditorium that's not quite ready. Are we planning on doing the same thing this year for parents? Or did we do it just because it was new last year, or?
We don't have plans to do it right now. Certainly, last year, given the landscape that we were up against, it seemed to be meaningful, relevant, worthwhile. Our ship has seemed to have steadied. The participation numbers are up.
Maybe an abbreviated version during a coffee talk.
Perhaps.
Okay.
I'd love to have that opportunity. As a matter of fact, our first coffee talk is Thursday night.
It is. We can do this all over again.
We can do it all over again. Bring a friend. 7:00 PM.
There's cookies, right?
There'll be cookies and coffee. Is that right, Mr. and Mrs. administrator? Yes, yes, correct. He said yes, he said there'll be coffee and light.
Well, this is great, thank you. We appreciate the data. And if parents have questions on their, the scores that they receive, who should they reach out to first?
Their principal first, and then...
And would it be their, if they've switched schools, would it be their current principal? Or would it be the principal in the building in which their kids took the test, or?
Good question. I would say their parent principal. They are well aware of the data as well. They're sort of the hands-on team at that point.
Got it, okay. Any other Park-related questions? All right. Presentation that's next, that's actually not on the agenda, and I want to apologize because that was an oversight, and I apologize that the public wasn't informed ahead of time. Our architect, Rob Donahue, is here to give us an update on where we stand with our various Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, let me get my papers set here. So, I'm here to give you an update of the referendum construction project. I'll start with the good news. The good news is, we had a construction progress meeting last week with Brahma, who's the contractor for North End and South End, and they informed us that it is their intention to be complete by the end of November, at North End School, which is, which is good news. They are progressing, sorry.
Is it ahead of schedule?
It's kind of, it's kind of in line with schedule. It's in line with schedule, because a couple of things have to happen after completion.
Right, that's not ready to go after that, that's their portion.
Although, although there was discussion about when they complete certain classrooms or portions of the school, you can get in and clean and prep those rooms and close them off. So, there is an opportunity to get ahead and take advantage of them moving along. And I have to say, I'm pleased with the progress. They're moving forward quickly. Tiles going in, unit ventilators are going in, piping's being done, so it is progressing.
So what needs to be done after their portion is done? At the end of November, what happens next?
Well, we have the issue of the ceilings that have to be replaced and the lighting. And we haven't determined yet who is doing that work, because we're waiting for proposals to make sure that we're getting a fair price. So we have that. And then we have the cleanup and setting up the classrooms and moving all the furniture. Whichever was, whatever's moved from, from North End to Woodland Park has to be moved back. So there's going to be a period of time where the custodians, custodial staff is going to be extremely busy like they were last time, most likely. It's going to be a last-minute rush, because when things are ready, you have to wait till the students are done using it, then move it.
And the main office and the nurse's office has to be redone as well, including the ceiling?
That's part of the ceilings, yes, ceilings and lighting. It's the corridors and the main office, the nurse's office, and the principal's office, which was ground zero. On another note, the high school.
So before you just move on, I'm sorry, just, we're still at North End. So, we're waiting to get pricing to do these follow-up things that have to happen once Brahma's done, the ceilings and the lighting, the principal and the nurse's office. Where are we in the process of getting pricing and then?
We have pricing from Brahma right now. We were waiting for two additional prices. I've been pushing. For some reason, there was a holdup on the electrical end. We're hoping to have it the end of this week, early next week, but we have been pushing. They've had the drawings for quite some time, so it's just a matter of pushing, trying to get an answer. So, if I, any more questions about North End?
And then, I guess, one more follow-up, sorry. So then, we get the pricing, so then we decide who we're going with. And then, do we have to submit permits to the town again to get all that approved? Or how does that work considering?
Well, that's an interesting question.
I'm glad I asked.
Yes, probably. I mean, if it's Brahma, they have a permit. They would probably file for a change to the permit. If it's not Brahma, it would be another contractor that would have to file for a permit, so yes.
And how long does that take?
Well, under the circumstances, I would hope it wouldn't take long at all. It's a matter of filing with the town.
Well, I guess we'll just have to chat with the town and tell them of our need, right?
And we can't file ahead of time, or get the thing in motion now, just in case.
I suppose we could sit down with them and show them, yeah, we could, we could do that.
I think that may be something we might want to consider, based on, according, we've had issues before.
Well, Robert, if you could, talk, please talk with us about what Mari was done already with the folks from the municipality. They've taken...
Yes, well, so, so part of the story is, when the ceiling was taken down, things were discovered that were concealed by the ceiling over X number of years. There was a number of electrical issues that are code violations, that have been there, that have been buried for years. So Mari, the director of facilities, had reached out to some electricians to walk them through, to show them the violations. He called the town in to show them, not only the construction code official, but the electrical inspector came out. And they worked with us in terms of, some of the violations are, you know, clearly, it's not something we can fix. It's pre-existing, it doesn't meet current codes, but it's pre-existing. The other ones, the electrical items, they have to be addressed. So, that's another component where those, those electrical issues have to be fixed before the ceilings can go up. They're, they're throughout the school. There's some wiring that shouldn't be in there, residential wiring that's in the school, some boxes that are overloaded, some boxes don't have covers on them.
So I'm afraid to ask this question, but I'll ask it. So if this is what we've discovered at North End, should we assume that at South End, if we were to remove those ceiling tiles, we would see the same thing? And if so, should we do something about that?
I think it's safe to assume, since they're sister schools, and we seem to have been down this road before, I think it's safe to assume that you might have the same issues there. But the only way to discover those issues is to take down the ceiling tiles, and that's not an easy task.
So the issues that were discovered at North End, are they, obviously, it's old stuff versus, you know, stuff that was allowed in the past or whatever, and it's now not, but is it a safety issue?
Not necessarily allowed in the past, either.
Okay, so...
Well, they're code violations. Code is for safety, so I would say that there could be some safety issues, yes. But again, to find them, we would have to take the ceilings down to find them, or at least remove all the ceiling tile, which is not an easy task.
All right.
We had the benefit, in this case, of the ceiling was removed as part of the remediation.
Right.
So it was easy to see.
Okay, so that's North End.
Okay. The high school, if any of you have been there recently or driven past, you can tell that they are behind schedule.
Really?
Yes.
Really?
They are, they are.
I thought maybe it was just my contact lenses that were like, I know I need new ones.
No, it was, it was true.
The snack shack's not made of glass, and it's not see-through?
Well, that was the old design. The new design has walls.
Exactly.
So, we have been all along pushing, warning, begging, pleading, and it's falling on deaf ears. Last week, we asked for a revised schedule again. We finally got one. So now, we have revised schedules. Let me say, we have ambitious revised schedules. So they're saying for the auditorium, they're going to be done November 7th. Now, I will tell you, I was in there today, carpeting was going in, and the seating was going in at the same time, but I also noticed that the speakers weren't up yet, the lights for the, all the theatrical lighting weren't on the light bars yet. Excuse me? That's what I've been hearing, but I don't see it. So then, the field.
So in your opinion, you said that's ambitious 11-7. Do you think that really will happen on 11-7, in all honesty? Based on what you...
Is that all that's left there? The items you just mentioned?
Yes, yes.
So have you filled in all that, the French drain rip up that hole?
That concrete was torn up eight weeks ago for the lighting for the auditorium seats. That's backfilled, yes, that's been, that's been in-filled. Carpeting, like I said, there's a photo.
We'll just be seeing it a little bit.
You actually see a photo of the room today. I have a panoramic photo that Mr. Featherman has in his presentation. So yeah, I mean, they seem to be getting the message at least halfway, because I see work happening, but then I see things that aren't happening. So I have some concerns. So then, the field. The field and the fieldhouse, again, another ambitious schedule. Now, I will tell you, let me, let me inject some good news, okay? The block is done today. So, from what I understand, Thursday, the roof is going on, and after that, the framing is going on, and then the metal panels are going on. So, you should have an enclosed building by the end of next week, what I'm being told. I'm also being told that the sod for the baseball field is going in next week, Tuesday or Wednesday, I believe. Land Tech, who is the contractor who is going to be putting down your artificial turf, was in the field today, and I think they're in that photo even, doing the final grading of the field for your artificial turf. So that's, I believe that that's really happening because they're, they're here now, and they're, they're installing that product. Last Friday, the asphalt was put down for the track and for the D zones. That's done. Unfortunately...
Did you say fortunately or unfortunately?
I said unfortunately. We also got this email with the schedule last Friday, indicating from ML subcontractor that they are very concerned about the time of year that they're being asked to put the top coat on the running track and the D zones. And basically, they're saying they cannot guarantee that they will have enough warm weather days for the product to adhere and cure properly. So they're telling ML they're not installing it until the spring.
Question?
Yes.
That's for the track.
And the D zones. That's the, the ends of the fields, the D-shaped spaces.
So what kind of weather is necessary for the top coat?
I'm trying to read this.
Like today.
They say 50 degrees and rising.
I'm sure we had it back there for warm weather.
Today.
Yeah, no, today. I agree with you, today. And I have to say, we have been, this is documented in our meeting minutes, we've been warning them about...
Timing.
Timing. And now, we're here. I can't, I can't read this whole email, but basically, they need 50 degrees and rising for a certain number of fixed days, and we had, we had 30s last week, so...
And it's going back down next week?
Right. So, that's the problem. And, you know, in the subcontractor's, I guess, defense, I mean, I don't blame him. You know, he's being pushed into the corner, saying, you know, I don't want to put this product down because I think it's going to fail. So I don't blame the subcontractor, I blame the contract, the GC.
So that's separate from Land Tech? So Land Tech will put the turf down?
Yes.
And this other stuff can go in afterwards?
Yeah, what this other stuff is, is the rubber topping for your, your track and the D zones. It is your finished track product, is basically what it is. That's what gets striped.
And just out of curiosity, if you step on the track or walk on the track without the top coat, are you ruining it at all, or is it a situation?
No, it's asphalt. It's asphalt. It's like a roadway.
So ideally, you could use the turf.
Well, yeah, but there's, the spring sports don't use, right? I mean, the D zones are spaced, they're not...
Yeah, yeah, no, no. Yeah, there's actually some, I don't remember what's on the drawing, but there are some track and field events that take place in the D zones. I think it's the long jump is in one of the D zones. So it's outside the turf field. Any other questions on the field? Oh, okay, so they say, they say November 10th.
For the...
For everything, except for the...
Except for...
Wait, so I have a question. Once, like, let's say we wait till the spring...
Yes.
For the completion of the track and the D zones. How long does it take to finish those once they start?
Right, well, how long would it be out of commission?
Because do the spring starts, can it be done before the spring, possibly be done before the spring sports start officially?
It's a 28-day cure.
Wow, Jesus. And what assurance do we have that they're going to start as soon as the weather lets them?
You're going to have their money. That's the only insurance you have.
Wait a second.
Don't we have their money now?
So 28 days to cure, so you need 28 days of warm weather.
Above 50. You're looking at late April.
Well, it's really looking at next summer.
No, I'm talking about, it's totally not happening right now.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're talking about like next year, right, we're talking about late April, May, where...
They can put the field down though.
No, no, I get all that, but the contractor is trying to say it can't be done, but...
It can't be done.
Right.
No, the emails...
No, the contractor, that was from the subcontractor.
Right, but the, but the contractor's not saying that he...
No, 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 the contractor, well, they were until Friday. And Friday, we got this letter with the schedule.
Right, so is the contractor agreeing with them now or is he still...
They don't have a choice, because this is the guy who's installing it.
Gotcha.
Right, exactly. Any other questions on the field?
So we're stuck, is what you're saying, without having a completed field until next year?
Seems that way. Now, there is another concern that I, I've been expressing to them also about the fieldhouse. The fieldhouse, we have polyurethane spray foam insulation on the interior, and I've been warning them that I believe that requires a minimum temperature for installation too. And I don't know what it is yet, but they've been warned. Worst case, I'm going to tell them they're going to have to heat the space, they're going to have to heat it and...
And it's on them.
And it is on them, that's right.
Just when I'm paying with their conditions.
The last schedule they gave us was for the boys' and girls' locker rooms, which were, by the way, I mean, just so you have a sense of when things were supposed to be done, the locker rooms were scheduled to be complete September 9th, which was three days before school opened, September 12th. The field was scheduled to be complete August 31st, however, there was an extension of 60 days because of issues with them getting permits. So that puts them at the end of, end of October, which we're almost there. So technically, they're not behind schedule yet until the end of October, except for the locker rooms. On the lo- well, and, and the auditorium. On the locker rooms, they're saying, it's a wacky schedule because they say substantial completion on 10-4, but then they say the metal lockers will be done 11-1. So really, we're, we're looking at, according to the schedule, it's 11-1. I was in there today and they were putting more lockers in, but they're just not done. And I asked about the doors and he says he doesn't want to put the doors in until the lockers are in because he doesn't want the doors to get damaged. So that's where we're at, unfortunately.
So we're just at the mercy of this construction company when they feel like finishing and to heck with our needs, basically?
Well, the only thing we have is we have a clause in the contract for liquidated damages. And, you know, you know, it's up to Mr. McKee here about how that gets enforced, but as far as I'm concerned, they deserve liquidated damages for the, the locker rooms at a minimum. You're, you're suffering because you don't have those locker rooms. And then the fields, when the time rolls around, I think, I think we should look at that as well.
But the locker rooms, what's the issue with the issue?
I wish I knew. I wish I knew. It, it, they just can't, they just can't seem to properly coordinate and man the project.
Have other districts that have used them have this problem?
No comment, Robert.
I don't know, I, I, I believe your, your BA had experience with them in another district.
I think our BA had some experience with them in the past.
And I think you, and I think you had a successful experience with them in a small project.
Yeah, small project, but, we can talk about more. But we were bound to use them because they were the lowest bidder?
Yes. Yes, they were.
So by state, by law, are, we have to use them?
We had no choice, let's make that clear.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to award the contract, they were the only contractor you could award.
This wasn't an issue of the board trying to save money or go with the cheap option or anything like that? We had no choice.
No, and you had, you had a number of bidders too, so, and they were, they were the low bidder. And we had some concerns with their bid from the very beginning. We asked them to address those concerns, they said, "No problem," and here we are.
And there's nothing that can be done, not to, to beat the dead horse that's laying on my track that won't be done until next year, but is there anything as far as like weather conditions or anything like that, that they could, heating conditions, winterizing anything or anything like that, that we could force them to do to finish this project?
The fieldhouse.
No, like the, the laying down of anything, is there anything extraordinary that can be done?
I don't, I don't see how you, you could do that with the field. I don't, I just don't see how that would be possible. I mean, I could talk to my civil engineer, but it, that seems remarkably extraordinary. I don't, I don't know how you would build a structure and heat the structure, because you'd have to heat the ground, you know, this product needs the ground to be warm.
So what happens next year? I mean, you just said, okay, we have their money and so they want to finish, but I would have thought they'd want to finish this year to get their money.
I would have thought so too.
So what happens when we're sitting here next June and it's not done? I mean, what do we do?
Are we at any point allowed to go out and rebid it and use that money?
You are, you are way, way beyond that point. We're way beyond that point.
Way beyond that, like, yes, we could do that or?
No, you will, you will, you will just lose in that.
No, I mean, when next year comes.
Right.
I'm not talking about now.
No, no, you, you, no. You, you're not, you're going to pay two, three times more for it and, and I don't know the legal issues, but you're probably going to have a battle on your hands with them saying that they should be able to finish it.
Whenever they feel like finishing it.
No, no, not when they, no, I think they're, I think they should face the consequences of not finishing on time. I mean, that's why liquidated damages are built into the contract. I mean, we, we set a deadline and we asked them specifically, and there was a reason why we asked them specifically, are you going to make the deadline? And they said, "Yes." And we've been asking all along and their schedules have reflected it, and then as they don't meet it, they change the schedule. And again, this was from Friday, this revised schedule.
Well, it might be interesting if they could come and tell the public and give them a date, to the public, when they expect to be done with our field, since it's really impacting a lot. So it might be nice to have them stand up here and have the public hear them, give us another date.
Well, we have a construction progress meeting tomorrow, so I can, I can bring that up at the meeting tomorrow.
I think we'd love to have them at the next meeting and have them stand up here and, and give us an account of when they think everything's going to be done. And I would encourage everybody to attend that meeting, absolutely. And I see Mr. Canelo's in the audience and I would recommend that you are certainly, and your staff is impacted, you should invite everybody as well. Because I'm sorry, but this is, this is just ridiculous. I mean, this is.
You cannot, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, just hold on, he's not going anywhere, so you'll have an opportunity, I promise. We're not letting him go anywhere, no.
So just back to the auditorium. What has to be done in the auditorium? Are we putting the, the chairs and like carpeting down?
They're putting down the carpeting and they're installing the seating, but they also have to install the speakers and the theatrical lighting. And the other component that I, I, they have, they keep, keep giving me a runaround on is, is the whole AV system set up and tested? Every time I ask, they say, "The guy's coming, the guy's coming, the guy's coming." So we, we have, we seem to have an issue with the AV, the theatrical and AV guys on this job, because they're a sub of a sub. So...
So really, there's like, so there's three major things?
Well, and, and, yes, I mean, obvious, the obvious ones are the carpet and seating. You can, you can see that.
Right.
The ones that you can't see are the ones that are going to affect how the space is used.
So in the, in the auditorium, it's just, the unknown right now is the AV guy?
Yes.
That's the unknown element of it?
Yes. I mean, because the seating, the seating's going on now, the carpeting's going on now. I, they tell me the carpeting will be done the end of the day tomorrow, I believe, which seems realistic to me because it was maybe a third of the way done today.
So, and so we say AV, does that incorporate sound systems?
Yes. Sound, sound and lighting controls.
Right. And so like the curtain is up?
No, the curtain is not up. The curtain was taken down and believe me when I tell you, you don't want the curtain up right now.
Right, but it's the same, but we have it, it's like, it just has to be put up?
Yes, yes. I mean, they're sanding, the, the, you don't want it in there, because it'll just be, it'll be a wreck. Any other questions?
Kathy, Kathy, you was like, you're talking to...
No, I'm just serious, that was not sarcasm. No, I want them, I want them to come, November 15th, 8:00 PM, regular meeting, and we should absolutely spread the word that we, I mean, it gets to a point, I mean, the locker room, especially if you were given numerous dates, what's going on? I mean, our auditorium, we have a play, we have a show, we...
In the locker room, they were giving, they were, they were given two weeks early start too. So we, we actually gave them a two-week early start in locker rooms because I think the abatement was done early, so we gave it to them. So it was squandered. It was just squandered.
And so just to be clear, since the locker rooms aren't done, students can't change for gym, is that correct still? Okay. All right.
But we have them moving and participating in activities and making the best of a challenging situation.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Wish I had better news.
It's not all bad, as you'll see from my report, and there's, I don't want to sound like the village idiot here, but we're, it's, we're farther along than I think all of you are thinking we are at this point in time, no offense, Robert, but I'll, you know, I'll, I'll be the, you know, the good cop.
Yes, when we get to S1, we'll apparently, we're going to anxiously wait to get to that part.
There's good news, hang in there, stay the course, folks.
All right. Let's move on, you've got to have one.
Moving on. From the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So, second?
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of October 11th, 2016. B2 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of August, 2016. And B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich?
I have stamped for B1, yes to B2 and B3.
Mr. Shoner?
Yes.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B4?
So moved.
Second.
B4 is a motion to pay the following list of bills that were in our packet dated October 18th, 2016. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Under business, I'm going to break it up just a little bit. Can I have a motion for B5 through B8?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to approve the Brahma Construction Corp. payment application number five and the amount listed for work done at both North End and South End schools. This has been reviewed and approved by Robert Donahue, our architect. B6 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Corp. change order number six and the amount listed therein. It's been for both North End and South End, it's been approved by Robert Donahue. B7 is a motion to accept the Cedar Grove Board of Education comprehensive annual financial report as of June 30th, 2016 with no recommendations. And B8 is a motion to retroactively approve proposals submitted by Lilith Corporation and the amount listed therein for asbestos removal work performed at both North End and South End schools. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. I have a motion for B9.
Oh, so moved? Second.
B9 is a motion to incorporate the following into the Cedar Grove Board of Education's 2016, 2017 board goals, and I'm actually going to read each one of them. These are the goals that we discussed as a board last week and our attorney put together for us. Number one, student achievement. Continue to support professional development initiatives that target the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, formerly the Common Core, and Core Curriculum Content Standards. Rewrite aligned science instructional standards with next generation science standards. Continue to develop 21st century classrooms through new technology initiatives that student focus and consistent with student achievement objectives. Specifically, build a strategic plan for digital learning using the future-ready model. Continue to evaluate AP and dual enrollment programming to promote and enhance the same. Number two, communications. Develop a targeted communication strategy for the board to regularly update the public on issues, events, and other relevant district information on a regular and timely basis. This strategy would incorporate the use of social media, district website, and other forms of electronic communication. Specifically, this effort will include the use of coffee talks, did you know, emails, and regular columns in the Verona Cedar Grove Times. Number three, 2014 referendum closeout. Oversee the completion of the 2014 referendum projects at the Cedar Grove High School, North End Elementary School, and South End Elementary School. This includes, but is not limited to, the substantial completion of milestone dates, closeout of all state required documentation, punch lists, certificates of occupancy received for all buildings, and successful transition from Woodland Park to North End Elementary School. Number four, child study team audit. Review the results of the child study team audit. Develop and implement strategies based on audit recommendations to streamline procedures in this department, analyze and review cost savings, and sharing opportunities that may be available. And the only thing I think we should add to number four is the 504 audit as well, because I don't think that's incorporated under the child study team, because that's general ed. Is that correct? Okay, and that was the intent on number four was for both. And number five, the budget. Continued review of sound financial practices. Review and analyze capital reserve account. Develop and implement strategies for refunding the depleted capital reserve account for future needs. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Can I have a motion for B10?
So moved. Second.
B10 is a motion to accept a donation of $920 from the girls' soccer car wash to be used for the girls' soccer program. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Now, the moment we've been waiting for, from the office of the superintendent of schools and personnel.
Mike, you better do something, because we all sound defeated right now. You can hear it in our voice, it's just like, aye.
Mr. Featherman will be presenting his superintendent report with lots of pictures, I'm told.
You have some good news to report, ladies and gentlemen.
Robert, I used to look forward to seeing you.
I still do.
Don't shoot the messenger.
No.
He's like, no.
Even he sounds defeated.
I know, world, it's... Well, it's my job to change the tone here. Now, I don't want to lecture to y'all.
No, it's a new slide.
I have to tell you something. I am, I am fired up here right now. I'll make it bigger. Don't you worry. We've got zoom ins and zoom outs. You, you worry. Now, when we started our discussions, Mr. Mandala and many of us here in two thousand fourteen, we knew then that it would be a moment in Cedar Grove School District history to get that referendum passed. And we did it, didn't we?
We did.
And we had our doubters then.
We did.
People thought we were crazy then.
We did.
And people go by the site now and still think we're crazy today.
They do.
They do. But I'm here to tell you and everyone else who's listening and will be watching this in the future, this project is going to get done and you won't believe how impressive a project it is going to be. And I don't say that lightly or for dramatic effect. We've been visiting the site regularly and it, the last couple of weeks before our eyes, it is transforming into the vision that each of you had and that, to a certain degree that I had had years ago. I have to tell you, it's going to be amazing.
I hate to say this.
Have we changed the mood in the room? I think we have. So let's talk about the superintendent's report. But before we get to the candy, let's talk about the real good stuff going on here. We are getting our kids college and career ready and we're doing that in a myriad of ways. And let's just talk a little bit about what this report represents here. There is a superintendent's report somewhere. It's, I think it's twelve pages long. My attempt here is not to exhaustively summarize that, but just pull out the highlights. So just, what you see here is just a taste of that report. Please go online. We'll have it posted tomorrow. There's so much more going on. Here are the highlights. So let's talk about some college and career readiness stuff going on. What's happening tomorrow at Cedar Grove High School? How about sitting for the PSAT, many students for the first time? Research shows one of the best ways of improving performance on the SAT is taking the PSAT. And we, as a district, are committed to doing that. So tomorrow, grades nine, grades ten, grades eleven, we'll be doing just that. That's just the tip of our college and career-ready iceberg. On the other side of things, we've got our graduation testing requirements for our seniors to be concerned with, for our staff at the high school to be concerned with, and we are. But the good news is nearly all of our seniors are graduation-ready. We're down to just a, a, a small handful of kids. And the ASFAB, one of the, the avenues for us to take advantage of, have gotten us mostly there. Let's look more closely. Yes, the PSAT, yes, yes, the, things are going on. Yes, at the middle school. How about the middle school? This space that we're in right now has been transformed at certain times of day into the Makerspace Club. What are, what have they been working on? How about working with the Kerbal Space Station software? How about these kinds of things going on right here in our district? What is that? Well, it's like a game where our kids will actually be able to design a space station, a spaceship that will allow them to travel to that space station and do so and survive that mission with all the engineering and the science behind that. How cool is that? So we've got kids working on how to create their own rocket ship to perhaps perform a lunar landing and how to survive that. We have three D printers that are allowing them to make those designs and to actually create the parts to make that ship for that theoretical journey. I mean, how cool is that stuff that's going on right here in Cedar Grove? Are you future-ready? That's what I want to know. Well, the students that come through Cedar Grove School District will be. And to reinforce our commitment to that, our district technology committee that was formed a couple of years ago by yours truly and by the support of the board and a, a passionate group of early adopters, we are moving ahead with our commitment to get our kids digital and future-ready. So in November, we're taking that trip to Trenton and we're going to join with lots of other like-minded folks in New Jersey and talk about and build a strategic plan for digital learning here in Cedar Grove. I'm excited to do that. I'll be joining the team. We will give you a full report upon our return. What else is going on here in Cedar Grove outside of the books, the desks, the pens and pencils? How about the school culture? Yeah, that matters here in Cedar Grove. And so we just had a week of respect and we're talking about how to improve our culture and climate on a daily basis with respect to harassment, intimidation, bullying, kindness. There are things going on K through twelve here that you need to know about, you should be reading about, our principals are tweeting about. Good stuff going on here the month of October. Thank you to the middle school FSA for supporting, as always, the initiatives that make this work possible. Ryan's story, an amazing story. If you were there, you'll never forget Ryan's story. A father who lost his son to cyberbullying, travels the world and tells his tale and helps educate and provide resources, tools for districts, for families, to avoid that tragedy of their own. Week of respect, we had it at all of our buildings, just picked at the middle school just, just because. Spirited theme days and respect challenges that they read over the PA system. Can't wait to see their latest edition of their respect video. We'll play it for you right here. How about the Power of One down at South End in Fire Prevention Month? All of our kids were exposed to fire prevention, got their little fireman hat. I was running around with a little fireman hat down at LLP. How cool was that? Mr. Kenny was climbing ladders. It was exciting stuff. The kids feel safer today than they did yesterday about themselves, about their peers. How about the Power of One program at South End where kids put their name on the dotted line? They're committed to being kind to one another. That pledge is mounted on the main entrance of South End. Good stuff going on, folks. Good stuff going on. But let's talk a little bit about the construction. Yeah, you may have heard there's some construction going on. That's our auditorium, folks. That was yesterday. That's the carpet. It's coming in. Those are our chairs. It's all coming together. It looks amazing. Stay the course with us, okay? It's coming together. It's going to be spectacular. Is that a track? Yeah, well, almost. The track went down the other day. Well, at least the asphalt substrate, it's coming together. Yes, those, this is your D-zone that we talked about here, this asphalt D-zone. This is the track here. Concrete concourse is all coming together. Here's our snack shack. The bleacher system is all together. This press box, it, it's amazing. We were standing up here the other day and it's going to be spectacular, spectacular. And what's going on at North End? And we're almost done. There's not a whole lot more here, folks. This is going on at North End. We're, we're making substantial progress. These are the bathrooms. So it's not just ripped down walls and flooring. We've got tile going in. We've got flooring, walls. We've got hardware. We've got facilities, toilets, sinks. It's all going on. It's happening. It's going to get done. Your investment is being wisely protected, built. Our architect, our engineers, your administrators, your teachers, our kids. We all know that we're not there yet, but we all know that we will get there. They have faith in us. I'm here to re-invest in that faith that I have in all of you. Hang in there. Stay the course. This will get done. You will be amazed.
Why couldn't you bring a report like that to us? You ask me some questions? No, it, I agree with Mr. Featherman. You can't steal his thunder. It is going to be wonderful. It's just not done yet.
Yes. Get there.
We're at the top of it.
At the top, we're at the top.
Yeah. Well, actually, we started getting down the other side.
Get there.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing us back up.
You've got this. You've got this, Robert. We know it.
Alrighty, under personnel, can I have a motion for S one through, S ten, please? I'm going for it all. Absolutely. Let's just keep on moving. Fantastic. S one is a motion to approve the superintendent's report in all its positiveness. S two is a motion to approve Francine, oh, boy, Lambreschino as a one-on-one before-school aid and lunch supervision at MMS for the student listed at the rate listed therein, retroactive to September, two thousand sixteen. S three is a motion to approve Kelly Lombardi for morning care at the curriculum rate, retroactive to September. S four is a motion to approve the following staff members for AM or PM bus duty at the curriculum rate, retroactive to September, two thousand sixteen. S five is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedure, which is Alyssa Calixto?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sure. Winter basketball cheerleading advisor at the stipend listed therein, retroactive to October, two thousand sixteen. S six is a motion to approve on second reading the high school baseball trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, for the Ripken Experience two thousand seventeen spring training. The trip will run from March twenty-first through the twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Students traveling will be accompanied by Mr. Nelson, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Rissimini. S seven is a motion to approve the following stipends for winter coaching positions for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year listed below. S eight is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S nine is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. And S ten is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. Wait, you gotta be official. You gotta kinda stand up and take the mic and say your name. I know. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Lisa Snyder, Four Granite Drive, Cedar Grove. Question about the locker rooms. Knowing we were having struggles with this, whose maybe concept would it have been to maybe have health? I heard a couple people say there really wasn't room to hold health first marking period?
Probably true.
You got folding chairs, you got bleachers, you got a gym. I mean, these poor kids have not had physical education because they can't change
Yes.
for eight weeks now?
A little bit.
Almost, maybe? Give or take?
Not quite eight weeks.
But I mean, who's, who's, should have been maybe fostering this idea? Would it have been at the school or?
We didn't think we were in a position where we had to look at the master schedule. Although, given the opportunity to think about that, having everyone in health class, there are lots of reasons why that wouldn't have worked.
Yeah.
But it is what it is. Well, it hasn't been eight weeks. Has it been, what, five?
No, five weeks?
It's been five.
I really think the problem was is that we've been given so many dates of when the completion was gonna take place, to be honest with you. I think had we known that there was gonna be an issue and we would be at the six, seven, and eight week mark, you know, hindsight is a lot clearer. But really, I mean, you've been telling us for weeks now, they're coming Tuesday, they're coming Thursday.
I've been telling you the same. We've been, we've been promised certain times.
So, yeah. I just knew that we gave them an extra two weeks to get started and I just figured once school started.
We share the same level of frustration you do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You can all date, we'll deal with two weeks after school's started.
And then there's been a number of dates since then that we were advised that they would be done as well, so, yeah.
Hang in there.
We really do share your pain. Honestly, we do.
More fairy tales.
Yes, I'm a big believer.
Any other comments? I close that portion of the meeting. Future meeting announcements, November fifteenth. Really? We won't see each other until then, huh? Here in the media center, seven PM executive, eight PM regular. Then December sixth, here again, seven PM executive, eight PM regular. Just a reminder, though, if you want to see us prior to November fifteenth, we have our first coffee talk,
We do.
which Mr. Featherman mentioned earlier, here, Thursday, seven PM.
We'll send any email reminder out?
Yes, we will. Coffee and some kind of cookie. And a board member will be present and that will be me for our first coffee talk. So we look forward to having people join us and chat about something.
The compliments.
Absolutely, right. Alrighty. Any other discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right, fantastic. Our motion to adjourn. Fantastic. Roll call.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Have a good evening.